All right, welcome to the Mountain City Council meeting for February 28th. It's Wednesday at seven o'clock, we're in Mountain Council chambers. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got the agenda. Do we have any amendments?
There is one amendment to item number six that is an additional public comment that came in after Thursday's cutoff. We have it here on you in paper form.
Okay, thanks. I got the agenda with that amendment. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of staff memorandum from Sarah Smith.
All right. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right, and then we got the consent agenda. Does anybody want to talk about, or does someone want to go through those?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd be happy to read those.
Okay.
For A, approval of payment of claims, for B, approval of the minutes for February 13th, regular meeting and workshop meeting, and C, downtown paper sidewalk replacement project.
All right. So we got those three consent agenda items. Does anybody want to pull those or talk about any of them?
I'm good.
Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got two seconds. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Aye.
Councilmember McInney.
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Mayor Holt.
Aye. All right, thanks, all that passes. All right, number five, we got comments and suggestions from citizens present that the item that they want to talk about is not on the agenda. You want to come up? Hi, neighbor. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Johan Schuma. I reside at 6039 Beechwood Road in Mount. Hello to everybody, thanks for your time. I want to talk about two topics, and I noticed that there's three minutes remaining. So the first topic is about building size for the future. As you've noticed, the new building is coming up now, and you must have noticed that the height is very high, and it's blocking the view. So I'd like that you consider for future development that for sure it definitely does not exceed three levels, or three stor- three levels, because four levels is way too high, like the one that is there, it's blocking the view. Now also, for future development, most likely the street, the buildings on Bartlett might be demolished, or new buildings will be built. If that were to become, to become, I'd like you to consider in the future that actually the buildings be tiered, where the biggest building is the one that's right now, instead of being the same height, which would then box the area and give the impression of adding a corridor rather than something that's pleasing to the eye. And for the future, also, keep in mind the 2040 comprehensive plan that requires that building have solar panels, because this building was built without any solar panels, which is kind of a abnormality in our day and age. So I would glad, I would be glad if you guys could keep that in mind for future. The second thing is about water conservation. As you've noticed, that winter is pretty weird, and for sure, we are in a water deficit. It would be great, I think, for the community that the city council and the mayor office takes an action to declare a drought and entice neighbors to not water their lawn, whether they use water from the city of Mount, or they use water from a lake, because there's no magic, water is water, you cannot pull water from a lake and say you're not impacting anybody, because somebody down the line is suffering from people watering their lawn. So also, if possible, enticing people to replace their lawn with something else than lawn, that is more sustainable for pollinators, for example, and also possible, instead of watering their lawn, is watering their trees, because that's what matters. A tree matters way more than a lawn. Lawn can be replaced, but trees takes a long time to, to be there, and it has a very important impact on our ecosystem. But that's, that's all I had to say, and I thank you for your work. Thank you.
Real fast, did you see that we put that water conservation in the last newsletter?
No, I missed it.
I think it was two of them ago. Anyway, that was your suggestion a couple.
I will, I will read.
Couple times ago, yeah.
Yes.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know we did hear it, and put it in there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
And also wanted to say thank you for everybody, and to the city work manager for the work on the water treatment plan. I think, I've seen it's moving forward, and that's, that's great news.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, there is a program every year where communities will encourage people not to mow their lawns in May, to let them grow through the month of May, and then start cutting. We've never talked about it, I mean, we've talked about it, but never declared it. Might be something for us to consider this year, especially because there is a drought, and, you know, we, we can see what the spring's going to look like right now, but since we have no snow on the ground. So something to think about. I think it's like a national campaign.
Is it No Mow May?
No Mow May.
No Mow May, yeah.
No Mow May. All right. Anybody else want to come up? Let's give us your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Jess Hill. I live on 2217 Basswood Lane, here in Mount, and as a resident, I personally wanted to thank you for all your, all your time, dedication, love of the times, it's a thankless position, I know you know that, but just wanted to take the time tonight to really thank you for everything you put in. And on the other side, I'm also president of Spirit of the Lakes, our nonprofit volunteer-based organization, and we're really ramping up for an exciting year, and I want to thank you for all the time and dedication that you've taken, that's taken of yours, towards the new structure that's going in, and all the work on behalf of the city and everybody who's involved. So I know the community's really excited about it, we're hearing a lot, and I wanted to take that time, and we'd love to have as many of you there at the festival this year, however we could coordinate and best help represent our community.
Cool.
Thank you.
Best event people look forward to, thank you for all the work on it.
I'd also like to say, I, I heard Wayzata advertising that they had the biggest, longest festival, our festival's three days, isn't it?
We're talking about.
The City of the Lakes.
Are you talking about that or fireworks?
They're, they're, when they do their J.J. Hill Day, they say that, they advertise that it's the biggest and longest festival on the lake. I think that Festival of the Lakes is big and equally as long.
You want to come back up real fast? So Wayzata is claiming that they have the best and longest festival. Tell them why they're wrong.
On the lake.
And, and that's wrong, right?
I, I think if, if numbers were to hit paper, the Spirit of the Lakes would by far supersede theirs in any Fourth of July show in our area, so.
I think you need to promote it in your advertising.
Yeah, we actually, we do, I'm surprised I did not know, thanks for letting me know, J.J. Hill Days does say that. We actually work, work with some of the people who volunteer and put on that organization with the chamber as well, so I'll have a chat with them.
Yeah.
Maybe we can put together a healthy competition.
Real fast, I want to be respectful of the three-minute rule, but we, just, you know, we met with Jess, as well as Jesse, the other day, and we talked about, you know, kind of preparation for the festival, and getting Jesse up to speed, and making sure he doesn't go golfing that weekend. So again, we appreciate everything you put into it, too, and we see a lot of value in it, so.
Yeah, and it hasn't hit our marketing yet, but it's, this is the info, this is the Spirit of the Lakes 20th anniversary this year.
Really?
So, lot of, lot of fun and extra, extra fun putting together some new swag, everybody loves the sweatshirts and stuff that'll go to true value on local businesses in town as well.
That's great.
Look forward to that.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's the 20th, it's the weekend of the 20th, July 20th. Yeah, you better. All right, anybody else want to come up and say anything? No? Okay. All right, thanks. We'll go number six, council introduction, presentation of concept plan for Michael Greer of Greer Custom Homes, of a proposal for a two-lot subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, guests. I'm Sarah Smith, I'm the planner and the development director. I'm just going to introduce this item, item number six on tonight's agenda. This is a council introduction of a concept plan. The council introduction is a requirement of the city's new policy that was put in place last March, that requires an applicant that is interested in doing a development project in the form of a CUP, a planned unit development, a subdivision, or a similar related type of product, to come to the council before making formal application to explain and outline the concept or their proposal that they are contemplating. For review, an informal comment with the city council this evening, Mike Greer is here. He and his wife are the owners of the property at 5123 Waterberry Lane. They have purchased that property in the, in the past few months. The property is residentially zoned, it includes an existing single-family home, they've had the property surveyed, and they've also done a wetland delineation, and a lot of those activities are depicted on the concept plan that was included in your packet, and also will be depicted on the overhead. Mr. Greer, through his company, is proposing to subdivide the property, to create two new single-family lots, using the subdivision process. As this is a council introduction, we have not done a staff report, this is not a public hearing, the purpose for tonight's intro is, is to have the owner slash developer introduce the concept to members of council. As is required, we did provide written notice to everyone that's within 350 feet of the subject site, and as was amended earlier into your packet, we did have a comment from the property owners at 5116, and those have been provided to the council as well as to the, to the owner slash applicant. Mr. Greer is here, and so we'll ask him, with the council's agreement, to come up and, and walk through his proposal. And again, this is not an application, it's not a hearing, but it's an opportunity for the council to get a firsthand hear, hearing from what the project might bring forth, and what the timing could be if applications come forward. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I'll close.
All right, does council have any questions for Sarah?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
All right. All right. Michael, can you give us your name and address?
Yes, it's Michael Greer. I live at 2835 Highland Road in Minatrista. We're longtime residents of the community, we've lived there for 30 years, and both of our children went through, from kindergarten all the way through high school at Mount. So, we're part of the community, we've been here, we shop in Mount every day, so, even though we live in Minatrista, we're really Mount people, all of our friends and so forth are from there. I grew up in Excelsior, my wife grew up in Chaska. I own a small custom home building and remodeling company, I've been in business for over 20 years, I get most of my work from referrals, and so I saw this piece of property for sale, and I really liked it and purchased it. The home was advertised as a demo, the home is, you know, it passed its useful life, it's a very small 800 square foot home, I assume it was probably a cabin at one point. From what I understand, you know, the lady that owned it had been there for a long time, 47 years, and, you know, needed to go to assisted living, which, you know, I went through the same thing with my mother. So it was tough, you know, to leave your property, I understand all that. So basically, when I saw the property, I just looked it over, and I, it was in the listing as well, saying possible subdivision because of the square footage of the property and the road frontage. I called my surveyor, that's done survey work for me in the past, and he met me there, and, you know, we walked the property and, and talked about the concept. I then had him do a preliminary survey, which is actually, this is what you're seeing up on the board here. So right now, if you look at parcel A, which is the one on the left, that's where the existing home sits now. And that would be demoed, and a new home put in there, and then the home to the east, which looks over the pond there to the east.
If you use the yellow, that's a laser, just don't hit the red.
All right, all right. So this is parcel A, that has the existing home on it, which would be demolished, it makes a walkout to the south, and then parcel B, which is the east lot, would also be a walkout.
There we go. Two there.
No, that's perfect.
So this would actually be the new parcel that's really being created, because in my mind, there's already a home there now, so even though it's two new homes, which is correct, there's already one existing home there, and it's been there for 47 years, or longer, I believe the home is 100 years old. So basically, and the other thing that was interesting is then when I dug into this, there's already a sewer and water stubbed in directly in front of the east lot, the new parcel. So to me, at some point, it must have been in the planning, at some point, when the sewer and water was run into the street, because it does make a natural spot to me, as far as, you know, I see it in my surveyor saw it. It meets the requirements, as far as I know, and all that would need to be reviewed by the planning commission, and all the folks that would be taking a look at this concept. But as far as my surveyor and I have determined, is that it meets the requirements as far as road frontage, side setbacks, rear setbacks, et cetera. It conforms with the zoning requirements for a single-family home, two single-family homes. It does have a lot of trees on the property, and, but the area where the homes would be built has been their yard for the last 47 years, so the actual amount of trees that would need to be removed are minimal. And I personally live on a five-acre wooded piece that we were lucky enough to buy 30 years ago, and I, I'm a tree hugger, so, and I've built on many tree development lots throughout my 40 years of building experience. So in no way do I intend to come in there and destroy the natural beauty of the lots. So there are some lot, trees that would need to be removed, not any significant trees, there's Michael, I'll go back to my pointer here, Sarah, thank you. Right here in the middle, there's a cedar tree that would have to come down, and there's one evergreen tree here in the front, that would have to come down, because regardless of which way you put the driveway, it's still in the driveway. She didn't have a driveway, which is kind of, you know, too bad, but I mean, the new homes would both have driveways, nice wide driveways, and they're both, all three of them would, or both homes would have three-car garages. And, you know, we just got this letter, so, you know, I have to apologize, because I just got this from Sarah when I got here, she received it this morning, I haven't had really any time to, to read this, and, but I'd be more than happy to meet with Jill and Mike and, and discuss their concerns, that's not a problem. Whenever I do any work in any neighborhood, I'm used to building in neighborhoods, that's what I do for a living, as a builder, I always keep a really good communication with all neighbors, my cellphone number's on everything, and a matter of fact, I went around to all the neighbors and dropped off a letter previously, and I put my cellphone and email on there for just that reason, because I understand I'm coming into a people's homes and neighborhood, and I want to be a, a good neighbor, I want to be part of the community, as, as I am, and so I don't want to come in there and have anybody think that, jeez, I'm just coming in here and making a mess and not caring about it, I do care about it. But anyways, so these are the, this is the development plan that I have, I would be intending to market and build the, the parcel A, the west lot first, because of the fact that you really don't want to build yourself in. So for instance, I would build that one first, and that way you can put dirt and lumber and so forth on the east lot, and build that one first, and then do the second lot. It's just, otherwise you're building yourself in, and I don't build spec homes, I have in the past, but, you know, it's just not a real good financial thing to do as a small builder. I have done specs in the past, so basically what I would plan to do, and I've done this many times in the past, is I buy a piece of property, I do concept plans like I've done here, I put together a price for that package, and then when I find a buyer, a buyer comes to me, either they like the package that I put together and propose, and I'll build that for them, or I'll start from scratch and do a custom plan for them, because I just found it works better that way, because I am a custom builder, I'm not a track builder, and that way the people get exactly the home that they want, and we have a buyer, you don't have a house sitting there that's unoccupied, or something like that. So anyways, that's my intention, is to, if I, you know, make the application for the minor subdivision, if that's approved, I would then start marketing the home, the lots, with my home packages that I haven't priced out yet, but I will, and, and then I would intend to first sell the, the west lot, parcel A, build that, at least far enough along where it's all framed up, before I'd even start the other one, and then, you know, in reality, I may not even build them at the same year. I don't know, I don't have an exact timeframe for this, because that would depend on the buyers.
Right.
So that could take, but the market's still pretty good in spite of the interest rates, you know, they're not helping anything, but hopefully they come down this year a bit, but the market's still strong, so my anticipation is that if I was to receive approval, and I don't know exactly how long that takes to go through the process, but if that was approved, and I started marketing, I would see possibly building the parcel A this year in 2024, and maybe the other parcel in 2025, or late this fall, but they wouldn't be both going at the same time.
Right.
I don't see it that way. Let's see, what else I can tell you about it. They do have wetlands, which I had the wetland delineation report done, there's a pond, which I'm well aware of, which is, you know, to the east, and you can see in the blue line there, that is the edge of the wetland delineated wetland. So, you know, I would take all the precautions that we normally take, we would put silt fence up, you know, I work with the Mini Haha Watershed District and receive a permit, and we put silt fence along, anywhere where there can be any runoff, we put environmental logs across the road, you know, we do everything for erosion protection. And so I'm aware there's wetlands there, the other wetland is way down at the bottom on the south property line, there is a wetland down there, and you see the blue line across the bottom here, that's, it just touches the edge of the property, but there would be no construction activity there, that is a, a steep hill there that's all wooded, I have no intention of doing any building at all on that slope. Like I said, basically, I intend to maintain the natural beauty of the, of the property, and the fact that the yard was a large yard is where the two homes would be going, so there's really minimal impact to the wooded site. And we would take all the necessary precautions to put up snow fence and silt fence, et cetera, to protect the, the tree area, and also protect it from any erosion or runoff going down to the wetland or the pond. I'm starting to think what else I can ju- oh, I mean, a little bit more about myself, I've been doing this at, well, I've been licensed as a builder for over 20 years as custom living homes. When the economy was slow there, I was a superintendent for Charles Cud Homes for four years, so I'm used to building nice quality homes, and I take it very seriously, I'm a small builder, and I just live off my reputation, I don't advertise, so basically, you know, I have to maintain a strong reputation, and I do, and that's what I'm proud about. So what I'm intending to do is really build two beautiful homes in there that are going to fit with the character of that property, and be, in my opinion, an improvement to the community and the neighborhood. I don't think they're overbearing homes, they're just, they're very nice homes, and they're designed to incorporate the views of the land, and, and this one, you know, neighbor Mike and Jill, I'm more than happy to go talk to them, if they have concerns, I certainly understand, and I will address them all, but both of them are going to have three-car garages, and both will have parking in front of their garages, so I just, I don't know why anybody would really be parking on the road, to be honest with you. But anyways, I'm more than happy to address their concerns, I understand, if anybody has a concern, I'm always have my cellphone is on and email, and I'm more than happy to meet with people on site, take a look at that, and so I'm, you know, I understand that people have concerns, and I'm more than happy to address each and every one of those, so. If everybody has any other question, please let me know.
Does council have any questions for Mike?
It's a really nice lot.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really excited about it, to be honest with you, everybody that knows me, knows I'm a builder guy, I get excited about this stuff, you know, so people are in the car and all this stuff, but I love building houses, so that's just what I do, and, and I'm excited about it, and I go through the process here with the city, I understand that it takes time, administrative things take time, and, and I understand all of that, so.
We appreciate it, as you've probably known, talking with Sarah, you know, it's just, it's a concept introduction, and then, you know, from here, then you'll work with Sarah to kind of go to the next step.
Yeah, that sounds perfect.
So, yeah, we appreciate you coming out and look forward to it, so.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Yep, thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Sarah, will that go on next?
No, there's, as I mentioned in earlier comments, this is concept, we have not done routing, there's no applications yet, and so the, the proposals, compatibility with the code related to zoning, and the type of subdivision, and is it qualified as a minor subdivision, and the buffers for the wetlands, and, and the lakeshore lot requirements for the district, all of that has to be evaluated to, to determine, number one, is it a subdivision that's compliant with, with no dispensation of a variance, because if there's a variance, that adds another level of complexity. I think what Mike has tried to do is design something that meets the code, but we have not done those, those calculations to determine if it's compatible, and if it qualifies as a minor subdiv- minor subdivision versus a major subdivision.
Okay. I see you stood up, do you have a comment?
I'd like to.
Yeah, come up, just give us your name and address, and you get three minutes.
Hello, everyone, my name is Ladislaw Sissar, I'm a resident of 5139 Waterberry Road, two houses down from this proposal. I know the property pretty well, even though it's over one acre on the size, the area where the building would happen is actually pretty small. It's because it's a steep hill. I do not agree with the subdivision as a resident of that street. It would bring extra traffic to our street, which is very narrow, not to mention the noise, and the obvious, the things that happen when, when you have a new construction, which is obviously temporary. The one thing that concerns me is when I look at the house on the left, it's significantly deeper to the south than the building that's there today, it would block my view at the lake, decrease my property value. The second building that would be put up there would most likely increase the traffic on the street, there would be more cars parking on our pretty narrow street, or narrow road that's there today. So to me, as a resident who lives on that street, this is a burden, and this is not something that I would be welcome to. Mr. Greer did come to introduce himself after I left for, after I left for work, when my wife asked him, how tall would the buildings be, he said he doesn't know. When she asked him if he would build two buildings or one building, he said that he's not sure yet, even though this is a proposal for subdivision, so I think the intent is pretty clear. Yeah, and that's, if you can see, the two buildings are very close to each other, the one on the left is as close to the property on the left-hand side as possible, and that is because the property, the area of the property where you can build is actually very, very small. The rest of the property, where the trees are, and where the wetlands are, is completely useless for construction. So this is, in fact, a very small piece of usable property, that's now divided into two households, which, like I said, increases traffic, noise, and, and everything comes with it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so we are going to, we're going to number seven. So amending Mountain City Council regular meeting time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Does Mike turn the lights back on?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
I can't turn mine on.
Is, am I just going with this or someone else?
Yeah, I can.
It's pretty simple. Changing it by one.
Mayor and Council, so this item is a follow-up from previous discussions at former council meetings. I did provide a little bit of a timeline on all those discussions. So tonight, we are considering an ordinance change that would amend the start time for city council meetings from the current 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So in front of you this evening is ordinance 1-2024 that amends the city code section 2-51 regarding city council meetings. Our intention is to get, is for you to consider that this evening. And then it would not be in effect till May because we want to do more outreach to the community about the time change if it does get approved. And want to make sure that any meetings that are currently scheduled at 7:00 that have been noticed, still meet that 7 o'clock timeline. And so, yeah, with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance. And then there is a resolution in there as well that is, authorizes us to then put that in the newspaper.
Okay.
Yep.
Does Council have any questions for Maggie?
I think it should be noted too that if you look at the staff report, in March, there's going to be a resolution brought to the council, a recommendation for approval of amending the official calendar to have those times in there. This is just, this is like the first step.
Right. Okay. And then just one other clarification, because I know we just did our newsletter. It comes out, or came out in February, early February. So our next one comes out early May.
Yep.
On our, one that just went out, that everybody just got, it says 7:00. So I guess we want to make sure that the May one is in everybody's hands. So we might have to do the second meeting in May. It's fine, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So everybody's on the same page.
And we can even try and get the newsletter out a little bit earlier. But yeah, I think, I think that's a good point, because we don't know exactly when people will get that. And we want to try and communicate in a lot of different ways about that.
We'll put on social and our website and stuff from now till then. But again, I'm good with the first of May as long as we get the newsletter out early, like third week of April or something, you know, so at least someone can go, oh.
And we could even feel more comfortable with, yeah, if you're more comfortable with June 1st too, so that we can get the newsletter out.
I mean, I'm fine with the second one of May. Or again, I know we've been kind of doing the newsletter kind of the first week of that new, you know, month, so February, so May. So I'm just, so everybody knows what I'm thinking, I guess. I'd say maybe, let's just say, the second week, second meeting of May would be kind of the start. Go with that? Okay. All right. Well, we got a motion on page 568. If someone wants to make a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion on page 568, amending city code section 2-51 regarding council meetings.
Okay, I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you.
Do we need to do the resolution too?
Yes.
Another one?
Next page.
Oh, we got one more on the next page if someone wants to do that.
I'd like to make a resolution on page 569, authorizing publication by title and summary pursuant to Minnesota statute 412.191, an ordinance amending city code section 2-51 regarding council meetings.
All right, you got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you.
All right.
All right, next up, we got AARP Community Challenge Grant Surfside Park Depot.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council will be presenting this one as well. So at a previous workshop, we discussed with the council and we had a parks, an open spaces commissioner, Joanna Khan there. We were talking about a grant that we, that the park commission, or there's been interest to apply for. That would be a submission date of March 6th. So I'm going to go into review for that grant. So it's through the AARP. So in that memo, I provide a little bit about the AARP and their history and what they do as a nonprofit. They have a community challenge grant that they've started, they started back in 2017. And I provided a little bit of summary on that and some links to their website and past applicants, applications for that grant as well, specifically in Minnesota. And so the grant program, again, is nationwide. And it focuses on and supports the efforts of neighborhoods, towns, cities, counties to support kind of livable communities, especially for those people who are 50 plus. And so again, I provided a little bit of application specifics, kind of what people have, or entities have applied for in the past and kind of what they've received. And so in speaking at that meeting, we haven't, I, the goal in March at the March Park meeting is that we're going to talk about our priorities for 2024, our short term and long term. But the decision was, since this application came up pretty recent, we would focus on a goal that's been discussed in the past. And one of those priorities has been to do some updates within the depot building at Surfside Park. Right now, it is on our schedule to replace our furnace there. We do, we do not have an AC unit, but we do rent that out year round. And so we did receive two quotes for that replacement. If we didn't receive the grant, we would still need to replace the furnace. So that is something that would be scheduled. So this grant, if we did get it, would support replacing it. The AC, again, we do not have. And what we would do if we didn't get the grant, we would just replace the ceiling fans to have air circulation. But the thought process for replacing both of these is to, and why we think, me and our commissioner Khan and I, we believe that this would maybe make the space a little bit more usable year round for people of all ages, make it more comfortable, because sometimes you get those really hot summers and really cold winters. And so we're just trying to create a space that's a little bit more comfortable. Again, it is a priority and something that we have on our schedule to look into. But if we can apply for a grant that can help fund that, we're going to try, if the council's all for it. So I gave important dates for the application process. Commissioner Khan is here tonight too. She's been working as well on the grant application. And so I think there would be a little bit more staff coordination with her before the grant gets submitted if approved. But that's kind of where things are at. And we're just looking for further guidance on how to move forward with that application.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Khan, do you want to say anything or no?
I really don't have anything down. I'm just here for that. Any questions?
Okay. Yeah, come on.
The grant is written and ready. It has not been submitted at this point. I do need a little bit, a little bit further information, technical assistance from the city. But I was waiting to bug them one more time until I got actual approval from council to submit. But I feel like overall, this is a win-win for us. You know, if we don't get it, we're not losing anything. And then if we do get it, we are going to be approving the really kind of last piece of Surfside Park other than the playground. So it's kind of like the final piece of that big project that's been going on for years, so.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you writing it.
What is the turnaround, you know?
Oh, that's what I love about, that's what I love about this grant. Great question. So if we were to receive the grant, the money would be distributed in June and the project must be completed by December 15.
Wow.
So it would be completed 100% this year. That is the goal of the project. And I think this is what also makes this such a great fit. This would easily be completed, you know, in six months' time. So, so yeah, by the end of the year, if we get the money, then it would be done.
Thanks for doing this.
You're welcome. It's great.
I was wondering if you could make any indication that we would also consider looking at solar for this system?
Oh, sure.
You know, and I think it's important, because of all the work that we're doing in Surfside, you know, we've done the conversion of the armless benches with arms now for age-friendly and the ADA park coming in. To mention those things, so it all really shows that we've got this momentum and this is a final piece, so to show that we've got leverage.
I agree. That's one of the actual kind of components of the grant, is they're looking at the larger livability. And I think that we have made already a lot of livability improvements at Surfside Park. So it's definitely part of the argument in the grant that the city has already invested a lot in this. And then we're just looking for a little bit more help to finish out that project that we've already dedicated a lot of time and money to. So I think it's a good argument. We'll see if we get it. It's a competitive grant because it's a national grant, but, you know. The city's been super helpful. Maggie's been very helpful with doing a lot of the background work and Ryan at the city. And, you know, the grant's written at this point, so ready to go.
Let it rip.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
So you just need a motion to staff?
Yeah, and I believe that there's a resolution in there that, or maybe I, oh, maybe I forgot. Oh, you know what? Okay.
I think it's just a motion.
This was my error. Yes, I talked to the attorney about this. So yes, we do not need the resolution. It would just be a simple motion to move forward with the grant application.
And obviously, if we get the grant, then we'll bid out the actual work.
Yeah, so that's what we, those were the two estimates that we received that we think it'll come in at. And we would likely go with the lower one. But yeah, we would get a more final cost closer to that, because we do need to submit those details. And then we would get a final cost on the, what we think the electrical will be, because that was not quoted. That's something that I put in the memo that said it could be an added cost if we need, when we install an air conditioning unit, there might be some changes that need to, electrical changes. And so within that too, we would be, there would, there could be some costs associated with that. But I wanted to include that for transparency purposes, that if we did get the grant, there could be some minor costs on the city for electrical. We'll try and include it in the grant, but I don't know if that would be.
Just out of curiosity, I have to admit that I have not been in there in years. I think when I moved back here in 98, I went in there once. But I know we've done some interior improvements, correct?
Yeah, I know we did too. And I was like shocked to, I guess I didn't, I wouldn't have thought that it didn't have air conditioning.
Yeah, I think, if I can remember correctly, I did talk with the public work superintendent. He did said some improvements have been made over the years, but not with, not with this part.
But it's rented quite a bit, right?
It was rented this last weekend.
Yeah, it should have, basically.
Yeah, and he did mention the ceiling fans, which are pretty, in pretty rough shape. So again, if we didn't get the grant, his priority would be to look at that replacement just for airflow. But yeah, so it's been gradual improvements to that space, so.
It might be, would you be considering replacing the fans even if we get the grant to put in air conditioning? Because you don't always have to have the doors shut.
I could talk to, yeah, I could talk to Ryan about that, because, yeah, I think like the overall goal is to get air moving in there, so, but they look, apparently they look a little rough. So we would, we would want to either replace them or remove them or, and make sure there's still air moving, so.
They're kind of a 70s vibe.
Yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to staff. So what is our motion? I mean?
To authorize the staff to proceed in submitting the grant request.
All right, you do it.
I make a motion that we direct staff to proceed in submitting the grant request to AARP for the Surfside Park Depot building improvements.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so last thing, we got city manager review template discussions. So as you recall, we really never had a way, a way to kind of review our only employee. Jesse, this is going to be really awkward for you, I know. Just keep looking at the ground.
You get used to it.
So as, people might not know this, but we're Plan B community. So Jesse's really technically our only employee, or not technically, he is our only employee. And then from there, then he kind of runs the city. So from consultation with the old city manager, as well as, you know, when bringing him on too, we've had many discussions of, you know, every place does reviews of their employees and just to kind of make sure we're kind of going in the right direction, make sure you're kind of staying on top of tasks that are assigned to you per se. And so anyway, we, I talked about it with you day one, when you first, the day, first day you started, and kind of gave you this template. It's on page 584. Oh, you got it right there. And part of it was, there's some verbiage from the old city manager of what kind of he was doing and kind of his task that he does. And then so I just said, to be fair, I said to Jesse, I said, why don't you take this? You copy and paste, you know, what you think, you know, you want to be working on. Plus, the page right before this is our, kind of our 2024, you know, priorities list that we kind of talked about, worked shopped and whatnot. So I said, we'll kind of incorporate some of this into this template. And then, as you can see on 584 again, we're going to, we'll do this July. That was kind of the expectation when we hired our city manager, because we want kind of that mid-year review. Assuming that goes well, then there's a little bump in pay. And then December, we'll do kind of a year-end review as well. So I kept it pretty simple, because this is kind of our first time doing it. You can see city manager response. So the goal is, you know, let's just use number one packets. No later than close of business Thursday, proceeding, minimize, substant- substant- Somebody help me. All right. Agenda amendments and ads. In other words, we don't want too many of these last minute. Sometimes you get them, can't do anybody. But anyway, so then he would just kind of, in June or July, kind of document kind of his response. There's not a lot of space there, but he can do a different piece of paper or something. And then we'll just kind of go through, my, my thought or goal is that I guess each of us would kind of do, do this for Jesse. So the five of us would, you know, kind of go through that. And obviously, if there's anything that needs improvement, I mean, that's kind of the problem, you know, the help column. If you're doing the expectation or exceeding, I think you're probably doing good. So we're kind of looking for the, you know, the improvement ones, if there is any, maybe there's nothing. And then, and part of it is he'll be able to respond to if there's a reason why, you know, things aren't being done or whatever. So again, as you can see, we have different columns, support to the council, managed staff, finance administration, customer service, which is huge to our residents, the budget, which is also huge. And again, this, you can see they go through a lot of detail. Planning and development, the liquor, municipal liquor operation. You know, again, a lot of this flows up through Ron, but again, we'll kind of look through that. Fire. And then if there's any other, you know, right now we don't have anything, but. So again, the goal is to kind of do this in July, assuming everything goes well and we all agree that he's on track and we're good. It's not like we're not ranking him on a scale or, you know, this or that with this portion of it. This is just, you know, so we all kind of feel like we're on track with what we need to do. And then we can also, maybe on the other section, if there's something that we're needing to kind of add to that or whatever, we can kind of address it at that time. So that's the goal. That's what I came up with. That's what he agreed with. And then Councilmember McEnany, on the personal out committee, we, I think, kind of agreed on everything, right?
Yeah, we did. And then we looked at a couple of different formats for the employee review for their boss. And we decided to come up with this one. And it'll also be really telling for us to read through, obviously, you, you're their boss and we don't have as much exposure to Mayor.
Obviously, you, you're their boss and we don't have as much exposure to Mayor Holt might, but the rest of us don't. So we feel that this is going to be really telling for us. And obviously, the, when the employees or the city manager's employees fill it out, it'll be anonymous.
Yeah.
So we won't know who's filling out these. So we feel it's a good way to assess how everybody's feeling and hopefully it'll all be a plus, 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 five star.
Is this like the annual review form or is that separate?
Well, there's, there's.
That was my only question.
Kind of two parts. I guess it's up to debate if we want to do this in July or just wait till December with this part of it. I don't know if we already had an annual review form or not.
Well, we initially wanted the six-year because Jesse's a new, a new employee. So we wanted to have a chance to, so we were, I think, discussed this in December.
But I mean, I guess I'm, I get what this is for, but I was asking like for Personnel Committee, like did Eric have? Like was there an annual review form already?
In December.
In December, there's already that.
And it was, it was pretty close to this.
Okay.
This is pretty similar to.
Was it though? Even Hill admitted, he told me this many times, he's like, I, I just show up, you know. Tell me what the, you know, tell me what the deal is. Jesse, I think you feel the similar, that, you know, we kind of want, you know, kind of a road to go down. Otherwise, you're like, well, I'm just here and hopefully I don't not like, you know, the council doesn't like me for one day. At least this puts us on a track to, you know, for accountability. Plus, you know, you're, you know, what we're trying to have you do.
It, it makes for a more rewarding job when you have some direction. I can tell you that.
Right, yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, that's perfect. Perfect response. So just so you know, I didn't just pull this out of a hat. I did change this whole format. So actually, what happened was Jesse gave a, a copy of the three sixty review to both of us. And then I took it, so again, we're not just creating this out of bluer. This is actually a three sixty review template that I used. I just.
Was it from the Minnesota Cities? I think it was.
Jesse, was that the league or is that a different, that was a different one?
This was, the other, this was in-house. It had been used previously, not for a while though, but.
Sure. Because it had some stuff that didn't make any sense.
That's probably why.
Anyway, we got it somewhere, but it was a three sixty review, which if you kind of know what that is, I mean, it's, these questions are tailored for a reason. They're not just random things that people come up with. I did take out a couple and I, I just stopped at five for each of them. I think on the template that you sent me, I think a couple had six, but just for math and redundancy on some of them, I think it kind of made sense. So as you'll see, you'll kind of go through each section, tells you what to do. It's pretty, I think, pretty simple and straightforward for his employees to kind of fill it out. We'll have to have someone, you know, kind of distribute them per se. That's not Jesse, probably Maggie. And then she'll probably collect them all anonymously and then she'll scan them and send them to all of us. And then that'll kind of give us, you know, maybe while we're going through our, you know, the, the first template, that'll kind of help us a little bit too. I, I think personally that we should do this at the six month for the first year and the twelve. And then after that, maybe, you know, assuming you're still there, then we'll do that yearly.
The six months allows us and Jesse to make adjustments.
Right.
That we'll see. There might be changes we need to make in.
July will come fast. So anyway, if y'all like that and agree with that. With the, oh, just so you know, I did run it by the attorney too, so we're all good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Do we have to motion the staff to put this into motion or?
You know, if it's never been adopted before as the policy to council, I, I would just, just for clarification, since we were just looking at the flow chart of the, or the organizational chart rather, when you start talking about who would be doing the, the three sixty, obviously, there's a lot of people in the office, but technically, it's just there's only four direct reports technically under the city manager. So would that be the expectation of this or would it be?
Yeah.
The full office or I guess I would just, before we get to June and then you wonder why there's only four or why there's twelve, you know?
I think it should just be direct reports. So who, if it's only four, it's only four.
Four, four direct reports.
It's Sarah, Maggie, Noah, and the fire chief, Chief Peterson.
Okay. Is that enough or is that what we were kind of thinking or no?
What about the liquor store?
Well, he doesn't really have a lot of, oh, Ron.
The liquor store falls under deputy city manager.
Oh, that's Maggie. Okay.
I mean.
I mean, you have interactions, but it's not your direct report.
Right.
Per se.
Yeah.
As it, as it exists today.
Catherine did the liquor store before.
Okay, and Kevin doesn't participate then? I can't see him, but, oh.
Oh, he's not there.
No wonder I couldn't see him. It's Randy. Okay.
Um, Kevin is under me.
Okay, they're under you. Okay.
Yep.
It'd be nice to have that flow chart though, I think.
We can probably pull it up on, actually, I think.
I'm not plugged in right now.
Oh.
Since we're streamlining everything with our email signatures and all of our, can we put logos on all that stuff too?
Yeah.
I'm just, that's just like.
Might as well.
Personal pet peeve.
Yeah.
But I think in the form I read every, I mean, the, both review forms I thought were perfect.
I just did a Word document and then I compared it to PDF, so I don't know how to add a logo. Or to that one even.
There it is. Okay.
So can you zoom in a little bit? So borders, city council. So again, city council is in charge of city manager. So we got deputy, which is Maggie.
Which we.
I guess I would like Ron's input and Public Works as well. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know where you make the cutoff, but like department heads or what are you, you know?
So you're talking about public, you're talking about Ryan, right? Did you say Ryan?
No, I said Sarah, Maggie.
Didn't say Ryan.
Oh, yeah.
I meant, I said, I should have said Ryan. I said, no, I meant Ryan.
Oh, okay. So what is it? It's Sarah, Maggie, Ryan.
Chief Peterson.
Peterson, so. It was, so Colette and Noah, no. And then, I don't know, I mean, like the, is there anybody missing besides like just the liquor store, I guess? Is that it? Is that fine?
Well, we got Andy too.
Andy's under.
So how do we turn that?
Andy's under the fire, right?
I guess I'd like their input too, you know, it's like, I don't know how we word it then.
Well, I'm serious. I don't know. I, I guess I feel like the intent was more originally.
To be more.
I don't know if it's.
No, you don't want.
I'm glad you asked. I know that was, I think, what people wanted. I don't know if that's the right thing to do, but.
No, I don't, I don't think you want the masses, I think, you know. We want to get input from staff, but the, you know, it's just like the people who report directly to him have the working relationship. Other staff will have working relationships, but there'll be also relationships with another person in between. So it's, it's a little different look on, on the position.
Less is more.
We're, we're really trying to find out how he is as a manager. And that's where the direct reports will really tell us. As Paula would always say, I don't know what they do. And so, well, we don't, but the direct reports do and they can inform us in that. And I think the.
So you're saying just direct reports?
Just direct reports.
Well, and I think, yes, this unsolicited advice, maybe you do this with your managers and they have the other people. I, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe you already have that in place, but.
I, I don't, but I do think that any, you know, any feedback is generally good. A lot of these relationships are kind of a constant thing, so. You know, I'm sometimes of the mind that if you don't know you're doing something wrong by the time, you know, your review comes up. And I look at that with some of these inner office relationships where it's one or two people, I mean. But sometimes it's easier to write it down when you have a minute to think about it. So it's probably worth adopting some form of that, that, that it, you know, catches the whole office versus just me.
Well, and I, I would add to that as part of being a department head. It's our responsibility to get feedback from those underneath us as well and listen to their concerns throughout the year as well. And when those come up, it's our job to address those. And so it's kind of, um, yeah, our, I, I would say it's part of our job. We're, we're supposed to be that conduit, I guess, between them and, and Jesse. And so I would say we'd be not doing our job if we're not communicating that throughout the year and, and trying to resolve any issues that come up in the moment, but yeah.
And, you know, if you get too many people, I used to have boards of thirty. And do you know what it's like to have thirty people evaluate you? Okay. Yeah, so you don't want crowds.
So the way I see this, and I've been part of a few different organizations, is that, say I have a, you know, my manager or whatever, and I'm reviewing my manager's manager. Might not.
It's weird.
As much sense.
Yeah.
And I do think Maggie kind of hit it on the head that that's the job of, you know, the manager to give feedback to their manager.
Yeah.
So I, I think the four, I think, is the way to go now. Maybe we can change it if we don't like what happened in July.
Yeah, it sounds good.
You good? All right.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's, so then we'll make a mo-, so you, we know it's four, right? We recorded it and it's on video. Do you need to say something else?
Unless there's a good reason for a motion, I, I don't, I don't know that there's a need.
Well, let's, let's motion it, just to put it in the file. So does someone want to make a motion to adopt this, the two templates and the four direct reports?
I can do it. I don't know what they're called. The Personnel Committee is more privy.
But just the employee review.
Okay.
Or no, the review template of the city manager and the employee review.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt both templates, one for employee review of the city manager and city manager goals and objectives.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
You got a motion, a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes.
Thanks for putting those together.
Yeah, thanks. Councilmember McInany.
Thank you.
And Jesse.
And thank Jesse, yeah. He, he did the digging.
Yeah, you did.
So Maggie, do you, you give the others their reviews annually?
Yep, that's, that's my, those underneath me.
Yeah, like Noah, Colette, and Ron, you give their?
Yep.
Okay.
And she'll report back to Jesse.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Pugh, do you have any comments or suggestions?
No.
No?
I guess next week, we're going to go to the Capitol, right?
Yep. March.
Seven.
Is that next Thursday?
Yeah, I thought we had more time.
Yeah.
February flew by.
They're moving really quick. You know, one of the interesting things in this session is that MHFA, the agency I work for and I can all tell it, is going for a billion dollar in bonding for housing across all spectrums statewide. So it's pretty exciting. It's also pretty huge.
All right, so you're going. Anybody else going on Thursday? All right, so it's the two of us and then Jesse, who else? You're going, Maggie? So the four of us?
No.
Are you going to be there, part of any other?
I thought you were Kevin.
You're not going?
I'm not.
Okay, right.
And you're going next Thursday, did you say?
Yeah, it's all day Thursday, right?
Yes, there are, there are activities at the, I forget the name of the hotel, just south of the Capitol. And then I've got a couple of meetings lined up, so.
So they have it like a convention center or something?
Yeah, we should probably coordinate a little bit prior to then, but.
Yeah.
We're, we have scheduled meetings with.
Representative Myers and Senator Morrison.
Yeah. So if we don't talk to them enough, but it doesn't hurt. Good. Well, and I appreciate you reaching out and scheduling those appointments and staying on top of it. All right, Councilmember Larson?
Well, I'm good.
All right, Councilmember McInany?
I'm good.
Councilmember McCaslin?
I am good.
This order changed. Do you see that?
Yeah.
We gotta fix that. All right. Okay, and I don't have a ton. Jesse and I met with Jess, like I just told you. We're trying to figure out, you know, sizing and what are we going to do with the grass, the fences? If we, you know, what are, what are we going to do? So working on that. Behind the scenes, we've been working a lot. You've been having fun doing it with Myers and Morrison on the verbiage on the. A lot of, oh, you too. You've been working on, you've been on all the emails too. It was, I think, what, what did we do? Probably twenty of them one day, just going back and forth and, well, change this, well, a little word, change that, little. Holy cow. Anyway, I think we finally got it, right? The final, final, hopefully. And I will say, Jesse, again, I know a lot of you have interactions and stuff, but I'm absolutely impressed with him coming in, taking it right off the, the top. He actually had a really good idea. He's like, why don't we call PFA? They're the ones who release the money. And you have a contact over there, so he's like, you know, I'm going to call whoever over at PFA.
Becky Sabey.
Becky, and, you know, make sure that, you know, they're going to be, you know, because that's what's holding it up, is that they don't agree on the verbiage. It's got to be fully funded. Well, anyway, I thought that was a good look and I'm really glad to have you and glad that you're working on that hard, so.
It's been interesting and I, I've continued to remind everybody involved that we need to stay on, there's a handful of people in the Minnesota Management and Budget Office is the other main one. So they sort of release that money down through the different organizations or the agencies rather. So I'm hopeful that all of our representatives can keep championing this for us because I think there are more conversations to come, but I, I'm based off every conversation that has been had and all the emails I've read from before, I mean, I think we, I think we're there. It's just, now we just need to get them.
And again, this is for unlocking the ten-point three we already got. And if we do that, then, and Brian, I mean, you know, we've specified exactly what we're going to be doing with it, the design plus the, you want to say what it is, the piping or?
So the trunk water meter improvements between the two towers.
Yep.
And then a new well.
Yep.
And some of the site improvements are all the things that, you know, we can accomplish with that ten-point three and then design of the plant.
Right.
We want everything to be shovel ready.
And we're capping the other two or that wasn't?
Oh, yeah, yeah. One of, one of the abandoned wells, arsenic, and it's to be abandoned properly and, and had been out there in the ether and we're completing that and those activities as well, that will seal that.
Okay. And again, this is all originally part of the whole thing. We just had to tranch it out to say, this is what we can do. We kind of, okay, this is about ten-point three and.
We've been very careful up to this point to let everybody know that, yes, there are pieces within this, but they're all Lego pieces that build miles water treatment. And so when people ask us, how much of this can you do now? We've said thirty-six million. We've, we've all been lockstep on that, that we need to do all of it, the whole project to get the whole solution.
Right.
Now we're, now we're back to like, okay, there are some Lego pieces within it and that's what we're talking about are the ones that fit into ten-point three.
Yep. So again, a hundred percent appreciate it. I remember that one, one of those last ones you stepped in, hold on, hold on. And anyway, again, I appreciate both your time and energy doing that. We're going to be doing our wa-, state of the water address per se. Hopefully the second meeting of March, right?
Does mean, right?
That, well, yeah, if you're around. So we, we do this every year, but we want to make sure that, you know, again, residents are aware. I do hear some people, you know, understand, they know, just like the resident that came up and said, thank you, you know. You don't hear that a lot, but we appreciate that. But also, you know, what are we going to do for the rest of it and this and that. And again, unfortunately, unless we want to change our minds, but that's a lot of money. We can't, we cannot do it on our own. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. Now, what can you do in the meantime? Again, we'll go through all this, but we do have a website. It says, there's a tab called Water on there. I just saw we instructed staff to update it. They did update it, so you can see, you know, as of February fourteenth, sometimes they, they updated it and, you know, some verbiage. And really, the big thing at the bottom is the link to the Minnesota Department of Health and kind of their guidelines, you know, reverse osmosis, water, so, you know, all that kind of stuff. Plus, remember, you can always test your water. and kind of their guidelines, you know, reverse osmosis, water, so, you know, all that kind of stuff, plus, remember, you can always test your water, it's, what is it, twenty-six bucks, maybe? Somewhere in there?
Cheap enough.
It's not that expensive, um, and then on that, we are testing our wells, uh, again, actually, right now, uh, Jesse's, uh, in the process of doing that, and then we should have the results for our state of the water, we don't think it'll change, but it's nice to know where we're at, because we haven't tested it since three years ago, whatever.
I have a quick question about the water. At one point, we talked about possibly getting a lobbyist, you, you happened to work with one at one point, are we still doing that, or?
We never did, and quite honestly, at this point, given that the, um, activity that our elected representatives have and the, um, close relationships, I think we are in good shape for now. We, we talked about it at length, you know, of, of last month, and if we did it and we, we hit a home run, you know, we'd all been patting ourselves on the back for it, I, I think, right now, we're, we're doing pretty well, I mean, I've been, I've been really happy with how easy it is to get ahold of everybody, and Mayor Holt, your relationship with them has, has been very helpful, so. I, I think, I think we're okay.
Good, good.
Um, just to, from what I'm hearing, and Cherry, you might be able to expound on this, but the amount of money they're giving away down there this year is not what it was last year, so, just setting expectations, don't expect, you know, a huge amount, if anything, um, that's kind of what I'm hearing, I don't know if you've heard, it's, I can't remember the exact number, but what did they do for the cash bill last year?
Oh, gosh.
Had a B on it, right?
Yeah, it was. Gee, how much was it all together?
I don't remember, it, it was a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot.
From what I'm hearing from our representatives, our, that number is very, very small this year, so. Again, they're, they're already, they're telling me, and so it's a little discouraging, but, um, again, they know, they're, they're fighting for us, uh, and I'm talking Andrew Myers, Representative Myers and Senator Morrison, so, uh, I've talked to, uh, Myers, and he, I said, well, how many people are emailing you and calling you, and, you know, I got, I got a half, you know, some, you know? Or did you put that in the newsletter, like, yeah, yeah, we did, you know, so, just keep, keep doing it, if, you know, they, they know, but it doesn't hurt to keep doing it. That's what we elected them for, so. Uh, let's see. Is that, is that anything else you guys got?
I would just add on to that, too, I mean, there was a change in scoring from the PFA this last year regarding manganese as an emerging pollutant. Uh, our, our score has risen, um, my own score used to be like five, um, now it's fifteen, just for reference, there's eight hundred and some odd drinking water pro, um, uh, program, sorry, construction projects on this list, the highest scoring is about forty. Above us, there's another hundred and thirty or so, they're usually around, they're around about twenty, and nearly all of them is because of lead line services lines, so our score went up significantly, that score affects our ability to receive grants and low-interest funding from the PFA, so you know, even if the well, so to speak, is kind of drying up for this year, I mean, if we can unlock this ten million dollars and design the plant, our score can continue to rise. And what, like, do you figure what design is about a year or more, maybe?
I think about it about a year.
Not to say we couldn't use the money, uh, and that we couldn't obviously, um, build the whole thing with it, but there are still opportunities, um, assuming we get through this, over this first hurdle, so it's, it's still very exciting, even if this year might look a little different than last year.
Do you mind if I add on to that, also, Jesse?
Yes.
So, so a lot of the projects that scored higher than us, you mentioned are specifically lead, we're seeing the, the lead service lines, and there's current deadlines, actually, that we have to meet that are, are, you know, lead, lead is a huge emergency, not that manganese is not, but lead is a very large emergency, and what we're, I think we're going to continue to see is larger buckets of money dedicated to the lead, and some of those projects are going to drop off, and we will continue to submit the mound treatment solution, and so then, you know, even if our score doesn't go up significantly, at least they've acknowledged with that extra ten points that manganese is important, partly because they've helped create the problem with the way that we were required to notify our residents and, and the way that that process has gone, so it's good that they're following up with some additional points, but hopefully, what that will do is the things that are above us in the scoring list will start to knock off, and then, as we continue to submit, we'll be closer to the top.
And so we're one thirty-five out of eight forty-six?
Yes.
Now, do you want to be one, or eight forty-six?
You want to be one.
You want to be one, so we're.
We're on the right, we're trending the correct way.
Yeah, we're, we moved a lot.
Yes.
Where were we last year, you remember?
Uh, I mean, way, way down there.
Yeah.
Like three hundred and something, if I remember correctly, there are some projects that score ones and zeros, but this happened.
Okay, and you shared that scoring list with me, right, via email? Can you add the water, um, state of the water thing, can you bring, have that as part of the deal? Yeah.
And, and even, there's more to it even than just all those, because they, they break it out into fundable versus non-fundable, um, and mound is currently in the fundable range, so there are projects that are above mound that are not considered fundable by the PFA yet, where if money were to become available, you know, we've done enough, and, and the more you do, especially when it comes to design, that keeps you in that, in that upper tier, so I mean, since being notified that this was the, an issue, I mean, mound has been moving in the right direction, and, and as long as the PFA and the MPCA know that you're doing that, you know, we just keep setting ourselves up for, whether it's a grant, or low-interest funding, or, you know, appropriations, you've, you've testified on Capitol Hill, they ask, what's your number, and I've seen it, people, people don't have a number, or when they don't know, and, you know, they just, sometimes they just want to know that you're trying, but other times, it's like, oh, you're, you know, fifth on the list, and you can't replace your lead service line, or your manganese, and so you're doing the right things ahead of time, makes these asks of our representatives much easier, too.
So just as a mental conversation with him and I, again, because I heard that the funding's not going to be where it was last year, we all know that, but still, they're talking a lot less, um, then I'd call him, I'm like, man, you know, what are we going to do, you know, is there, you know, and he's like, no, Jay, don't worry, you're, we're good. You know, even if we can unlock this money, again, it's going to take time to design this thing, uh, you know, see, even if nothing happens this year, we go, you know, by then, now we'll have some specs, we can go back next year, kind of ask, maybe we move up the line, so even if they unlock this money, or say they give us the rest of it tomorrow, anyway, I mean, this still is a multi-year thing, right?
Absolutely.
So, I don't want to be too discouraged, but I also don't want to be, you know, too excited either, but, um, so we spend a lot of time, sorry, talking about that, but this is obviously very important, and we always, you know, probably the number one thing, I get questions about it. Um, and again, our, go to our water tab, Minnesota Department of Health, you can see what you can do, in the meantime, it's going to be some, some time, we're talking years, uh, you can do a lot of things on your own, and then you can drink the water, you know, if you do your things and then test your own water, so. A lot of people are doing that, a lot of people have already done that, um, I've tested my water, so. Anyway, that's about it, I think, on that, right?
I think so.
All right.
I want to make a quick note to Maggie regarding the website, and Maggie's really gone through and really cleaned it up to make it much easier to access information, cleaning up, you know, nineteen-seventy-looking documents. So you've done a great job, and, and we really appreciate it, Maggie, thank you.
Thank you. If, and if you find anything that I've missed, just let us know, and we'll.
Oh, I always do.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
And you're still working on the, well, did you, you put the video on the, like, our recorded videos?
Yeah, so if you. If you go to the, yeah. I think.
It's a government?
There should be a link now that, um.
The council meetings?
Hold on. So there's a quick links to the meeting videos now.
Okay, perfect, good.
So it's a, it's a temporary fix, it's not pretty, but, um, it, it does the job for now.
Really much more cleaned up, so it's, it's a huge improvement.
Yep, you can find it, so, thank you for that.
Couldn't find anything before.
All right, that's all I got, number eleven, information miscellaneous, any from you guys?
I, I'll mention, just on the, you had mentioned, um, the timing and the process of the, of a, of a water plant. We get calls, I, I, several of them get passed to me, a lot of, you know, people just want to know that something's happening, even if you tell them it's going to be a couple of years, because we're in the works.
Yep.
It's, it's discouraging, but I haven't had anybody, you know, lose their mind over it, they go, thank you for letting me know, I will continue to do X, Y, and Z, or, you know, or, you know, we have options, so it's, when you start talking about years, it's tough, but, um, like most things, as long as you can inform the public, I, you know?
Yeah.
Every phone call I've had where people have asked, and I've kind of laid it out, nobody's been upset about it, it's just, okay, well, thanks, you know, continue on. The only other thing that I have is, been working with, um, Ryan, our superintendent for Public Works, and Maggie, we're trying to finalize a new job description for a Public Works Director, and get that all pulled together, because we'd like to have it posted within maybe the next couple of weeks, to see what we can, you know, it's been a really lucky winter for Public Works, I'm a little bit spoiled that Ryan has been as available as he is, and he continues to remind me that pretty soon that's going to change, and, um, so we're really trying to go through what it is that he needs support with, that he had had, or what maybe he would like to see, and we're going to try to put something out there that can really fill that gap, and see what we get, I mean, we're not going to know till we know, but, so, uh, we had talked about it maybe three or four meetings ago, so just kind of an update that we're, I think we're almost there, and you know, we're excited, a little optimistic, so.
Is Public Works Director like the name of the role that we're going to be seeking?
Yes.
Okay.
So that was, um, that was a budgeted expense, that was a budgeted position, so, um, obviously, it's the gap that was left, because Eric was doing, had the shared role, so like I said, we're optimistic, but we'll find out what the candidates look like.
And just to comment on that, I talked to Brian, uh, about the capacity and how we're doing, because you guys are filling the spot right now, and or actually, no, you emailed me and asked me how everything's going, I appreciate that.
I asked for a performance review.
I did, and I appreciate that, um, and then, so anyway, we talked, and, uh, of course, I don't know, I mean, I talked to Jesse, but I appreciate you.
I asked Jesse, too.
I appreciate you reaching out, and, uh, I did talk, uh, to Jesse, and then, of course, you, and, uh, you, you haven't had a ton of stuff, so we're, you know, we're kind of, you know, in a good budget line, which is nice, but again, like you said, it is coming, where, you know, spring and summer is going to come.
I think it's a chicken and the egg thing, too, like you said, the, the, between the slow winter, and, I mean, if you recall last meeting, I think Matt rattled off like five things in a row that were about to kick off, project-wise, we're just trying to avoid getting in the middle of all five of them, and then going, oh, we, we, we really need that person, and then pulling Ryan, or getting extra work that could be done elsewhere, so, timing's still good, um, but, you know, like I said, we'll see how it plays out.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I think, uh, we don't have any new workshops scheduled, um, I don't think we really have any topics that need to be workshopped right now, so if something comes up, we'll, we'll figure that out, but so the next meeting will be, what, March something? March twelfth, seven o'clock, here, okay.
Well, you should remember, Saturday is the library meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, this Saturday, yeah, library meeting, where?
At the library.
At the library, what, ten-thirty?
I think so, somewhere.
Ten? Ten AM, okay, so show up to that. All right, and that's it, then, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
All right, uh, and a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, all right, we're adjourned.